Studio right now and spending time with us this hour, uh, we have, uh, we have another candidate, a Board of Education candidate. She is, uh, she's gracious with her presence this morning. Amber Roundtree, running for District Nine, the Knox County Board of Education. Welcome, Amber.
Good morning. Thank you all for having me. I'm glad to be here.
Yeah, we're glad to have you here. You, you, you classing up the joint a little bit.
Well, I try, you know, it's early in the morning, but I have, I have my coffee and so I'm going to do the best I can.
Well, good. We appreciate you coming by. Uh, first off, the, the big question, um, why are you running for Board of Education? Why are you throwing your hat into the political arena?
That, that is a good question. It's one I've gotten a lot of times. I've had a lot of people also preface that with, "You're crazy. Why are you doing this?" Um, because I do love my job as a librarian and I love working with my kids on an everyday basis. But over the past year and a half, I've gotten really concerned about the policies that have been put in place at Knox County schools. And I've gone and spoken at multiple board meetings to try and affect some policy change, uh, talked with representatives one-on-one. And I really, um, haven't been happy with the outcome of that.
Sure.
I mean, I think that it's, um, you know, it's wonderful that they have the public forum, but I don't know if, um, the things that I've spoken about and the things other teachers have spoken about, I feel concerned that maybe they've fallen on deaf ears.
Sure.
And really every day I'm there with the kids. So, um, you know, I think sometimes it's easy to decide on a policy if you don't see how it happens on a day-to-day practice in a classroom. You know, I'm the one that's there, uh, seeing the kids. Um, come in, I have fifth grade helpers that help me in the morning, come in during TCAP week crying because of the stress of the test. So, why am I doing it? I'm doing it because I want to be a voice for my kids. I think that voice is missing from the school board right now.
Yeah, yeah. Well, that's, uh, that, that's an awesome thing, uh, to have somebody actually in there because they want to make it better, not just for, uh, themselves and their coworkers, but to make it better for the kids. Cause when it comes down to it, this really, and that's the thing, I hope that no one ever loses sight in all this discussion. You know, we talk about, we talk about, uh, there, there's, there's a lot of money attached to, to schools. We talk about, you know, who's got the decision to do what, who's got the power here and that what it all ultimately comes down to is, these are kids.
Sure. Yeah. At the end of the day.
And they're the ones who end up having to pay for it at the end, uh, really. Cause they're the ones who are going to end up either getting the education out of it, or they're the ones that we're just going to shove through the system and go, okay, here you go. You've learned the bare minimum of what we could, what we could teach you. Now go, you're, you're not really ready for the world, but go. You, you, you've, you've made the data and we like the numbers. Thank you very much. See ya.
Mm-hmm. And I think, and we had some high school students speak to that, but working with K through five students, you know, I'm with the youngest children who don't have a voice. I mean, uh, fourth or fifth grader isn't going to come up to the board meeting and
Sure.
give their opinions to the board probably. So, I think that someone really needs to be there keeping that in mind with every single decision that's made. You know, how is this really going to affect our kids when it's put into place? Um, like for our K through student, two students doing the SAT 10 testing. Well, it might just seem like another test to the board members, but they probably haven't sat through the administration of that test with those young students having to sit and have the questions run orally to them in sections and to sit for such a long period of time and do things that aren't, really and truly aren't developmentally appropriate.
Sure, sure. In your opinion, how much do you think a child actually learns just being tested constantly?
You know, I think it's very disruptive to the learning process to have constant testing. And, and, and my concern is, uh, my job as a librarian is to grow a lifelong love of reading and literature. And what I've seen the past couple of years is that has been on the decrease. And that's a, that's a huge red flag to me, um, because, you know, it's making reading not fun. And I think if you're constantly testing, you lose sight of, you know, why are, why are we really here in school? Are we here to be a data point on a graph? Are we here to learn, you know, lifelong skills? And we, and we really need to focus on the whole child. I think that's the other part. If, um, we go too far into just so much testing and so much data collection, we're missing out on all these other parts that we have to grow in our students. Social development, emotional development. Um, you know, I don't think that I've had a kid write me a letter. I get letters from kids all the time saying, you know, "I love you. You're my favorite librarian. You read us stories that make us laugh."
Yeah.
I've never gotten a letter from a student and I doubt I'll ever get a letter from a student saying, "We're glad you proctored that test for us."
Hmm. Wow. Um, one of my favorite things I've gotten to do in my lifetime, um, working in radios, there's usually over the past several years on, uh, on, uh, on Dr. Seuss's birthday, I get to go read.
Yes.
I get to go read, uh, for, for kids and I have done for, for many years and I absolutely love it because I, I love being able to sit there and, uh, share one of my favorite things, which are, I love books. I'm a huge, I was saying before you got here, I'm a huge book nerd. I absolutely love books.
Yay. Book lovers unite.
Absolutely. Uh, and one of my favorite things to do is just to, is just to be alone with a book, um, a real book, you know? Digital books are great. I love, you know, my iPad and all, but I love just the feel of a book. I love the smell of a book. I love feeling Paige. I love hearing Paige's riffle when I read through a book. It's just, it's, to me, it's a really neat experience.
Well, that's a sensory experience. So, that, that, you know, that's an added layer versus.
Well, it takes me back to, it takes me back too, to when I was a kid, you know, sitting with my dad and having him read me a book or sitting with my grandmother and having her read me a book. And it takes me back to that, that shared experience. I may not even remember what the book was. It was just that whole shared experience, that experience of, of sharing something. Cause my dad's a huge reader, uh, loves to read. Um, I heard something that really troubled me the other day. Um, I guess some librarians, some librarians locally has said because of some of the evaluations and the way some of the testing is going and the way some of this Common Core stuff is, that they've had experiences where if they have kids sitting in their library, reading, and an evaluator or somebody comes in and looks, if the kids are just sitting there reading a book, they've been questioned why they're doing that.
Sure. Yeah. Because if you look at, uh, as a librarian, we are evaluated on the librarian's rubric. So, we were, we were very lucky. The librarians in Knox County pushed hard and fought to at least get the librarian's rubric. But a lot of the aspects were just pulled over from the classroom teachers' rubrics, which doesn't really cover everything in our jobs.
Sure.
But yes, because if the students are quote, "Just reading," you're probably not hitting all of those points on the rubric that you're supposed to hit. Um, and so it's, and I don't think it's that the librarians don't want to do that with their students. I mean, that's my love. That is my passion.
Sure.
But we're put in a situation now where our license is tied to these evaluations and these test scores. And I know that's a state, a state issue, but that comes into play when people are planning their lessons. I mean, that's just the bottom line. I mean, it's in the back of your mind. Um, you know, if I'm doing X, Y, or Z, and the evaluator comes in today, you know, is this going to hit every point? Is it going to be, um, you know, the perfect lesson? I mean, there's no perfect lesson. We've already been told, nobody, you know, we've already been told Jesus couldn't get a five. So, um, there, so there's, there's nothing perfect out there, but you have, uh, it's an internal debate. That's how I, I like to look at it. Because I think I'm a wonderful librarian. I've always had great evaluation scores, but switching over to this new system, it is in the back of your mind. Are you, you almost feel forced to, um, you know, decide between almost what's best for your kids? Is it best for my kids at that time to let them have time to just buddy read? Because they really are not getting that as much in their classroom now with all the other, um, classroom requirements. Is that best for the kids? Because I really know they need that. Or how's that going to look on my evaluation? I mean, that's an example of, you know, situations that people face on a day-to-day basis.
Wow. One of my favorite things when I was in school, I mean, I, I remember this specifically and it's been about a hundred years since I was in school. But at least that long, uh, we actually used to read on stone tablets.
Oh, yeah. That's right.
It was awesome. They were a little heavy, but it was fun. Um, a lot of short stories. Um, no, one of my favorite things when I was in school was, was, it was, it used to be a privilege and you earned it. You got to go have library time. And, and that was, you, we went and we, we talked with the librarian and then we would get 20 minutes or so to just to go find a book and sit and read it. And it was awesome. It was so cool. You'd find a little nook or somewhere in the library to kind of be by yourself with this book or you and a friend. And it was just, it was, it was cool. It was like a little adventure you got to go on, you know, and it was, and, and if you did well, you got to go have library time. And you, you longed for that every week, you know? It was almost, sometimes almost even better than recess. But, uh,
That's music to my ears. Library better than recess. I love it.
But I mean, to think that kids, if you, you walk into a library now and kids are reading, the heck are you guys doing in here? What are, why are they reading in the library? How dare, how dare you allow a class of kids to sit here and read in the library? Amber just said before, she goes, "I want my own radio show. This is fun."
Well.
Can you believe people actually pay us money to do this?
Really?
Yeah. It's ridiculous, isn't it? Not a lot of money, but they pay us a little bit.
Well, you guys need a lady on the air. Can I just throw that out?
We have Terry.
Can totally sympathize. Same thing happened to me a few years ago. I was just like, "Whoa, I want my own radio show." Now, I didn't want this guy in here, but I'm just kidding.
No, no, no.
You gotta work with, work with what you got.
That's exactly right.
That's right. It's part of the, uh, it's part of the cross.
That applies to life and radio.
Part of the cross we have to bear.
Yeah.
Uh, we have Amber Roundtree, uh, in studio with us. She is, uh, running for Knox County Board of Education. She's running for the District Nine seat. She is currently a, uh, librarian at Halls Elementary. And, um, I'm going to, we were, I was saying this too, I'm going to see if I can get in touch with, uh, former First Lady Laura Bush. I'm serious about this.
And you have connections.
I do have some connections.
Yeah.
Uh, I'm going to find out what she thinks about the idea. I'm just going to ask her a hypothetical question. What if you were in, you know, with a, a group of kids in your, in, in your library and somebody came in and said, "Hey, you're not meeting all the stuff on your rubric. Why are you letting these kids just sit here and read?" I want to get what her answer would be to that. Cause I don't think she,
I don't know if she'd be happy about it.
I don't think she'd be really happy about that. I really don't. I think she would probably have some things to say about that. Um, now we've been talking about your, uh, about your, uh, your five points that you're, you're basing your campaign off of. And you can follow right along. You can find out all about Amber. You can go to votearoundtree.com. Uh, we've actually.
No D.
No D. R-O-U-N-T-R-E-E. Roundtree. Um, we've actually had somebody that apparently I guess went to the website and, uh, you have a fan now because they said that we need a studio webcam because you're very extremely easy on the eyes.
Oh.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
That's kind of a, you kind of have a, a compliment, maybe possibly a creepy fan. We're not sure.
We're not sure. We're not sure. See how hard, I've already increased your, your listenership already.
I know. That's amazing. Thank you. We appreciate that.
And as we speak, lots of people are just flooding the website. They're like, "We have to see."
Vote Roundtree. No D. votearoundtree.com. Now, we haven't even told Amber yet that she can expect after, after this morning, she will expect the, uh, the Root Awakening bump.
Oh, yeah. That's right. Yeah. That's the disclaimer.
Be prepared.
Oh, well, the bump, you know, I'm glad I'm going to get the bump, but, uh, my friend Mayor Burchett was on and he has the hot button.
Try that, Rowanaro.
And I think, you know, I think I need an Amber Roundtree hot button. I mean,
Uh-oh.
Can that happen?
That means there's a lot of pressure on you.
That's right.
Uh, between now and when you leave to do something hot button.
Worthy. Okay. I'm going to work on that.
Possibly a Vine and/or a YouTube.
A Vine? Oh, and/or a YouTube. Oh, boy.
Something good.
Can someone bring me some more coffee?
I'll keep my ears open though.
Amber Roundtree, uh, running for the, uh, Knox County Board of Education, seat District Nine. Um, so we have, uh, the five points so far have been putting students first, which is always and should always be the top thing for anyone running for any Board of Education here, there, anyplace.
Yes.
You've got to put these kids first. Cause that's what, at, at, at the, at the end of everything, that's what it's got to all be about. It's got to be about these kids. Uh, making sound financial decisions, which is a, that's a fantastic thing. Somebody, I mean, it's, there's a lot of money with education. We talk, I think, uh, you, you mentioned Mayor Burchett, I think, in this last budget. He was telling, saying what, 71%?
Yes.
Something like that, yeah.
70% of, of just this county's budget alone.
The vast majority of our county budget.
And that's not just this county. That's every county, anywhere in the United States.
We have like a billion dollar budget, by the way. Just put that in perspective.
The majority of money of any county's budget goes to education. Um, and you look at most states, the majority of states' budgets go to education in that state. I mean, it's just, it's, it's a huge amount of money.
And that was before the implementation of Common Core and which is costing folks a lot of money.
Even more so now.
Billions of dollars.
Yeah.
Um, asking tough questions, uh, which I, I think is a great thing. I mean, everyone needs to remember the dichotomy is actually that the, the board hired the superintendent. Um, so the superintendent needs to answer to the board, not the other way around. The way it seems recently is that the board answers and is kind of at the whim of the superintendent. At least that's the way it seems here for most people.
A lot of folks have that perception.
You, in fact, you would ask most people here in Knox County, who, who is above whom? And they'll say, "Oh yeah, well, the superintendent." And then you have the board and they answer to him. No, it's the other way around. He works for the board. Um, your last two points involving parents.
Yes, very important. I think there's a little bit of a disconnect, especially with all the changes with Common Core and curriculum changes as far as letting the parents know what's really happening in the classrooms. Um, and I think there are ways that we can really improve on that, like having more, uh, parent open houses and meetings where the parents can just come and listen to, uh, things that are happening in the classroom and things about the curriculum and have the opportunity to ask questions. I'm not sure why that's not, um, done as much now. Um, maybe it's because, you know, the more parents know, I mean, my experience has been the more parents that have researched on their own, um, about Common Core and about some of the testing that's being done, the more concerned they get.
Sure.
Um, for example, especially with the SAT 10 testing with, um, kindergarten through second grade students, um, you know, parents that have researched on their own are concerned about their children taking a standardized test at age five or six.
Sure, sure.
So, I think that we really need to, the, the communication maybe should be more open and just have more, you know, give that opportunity to parents because a lot of parents really just don't know what's happening in the classroom.
Sure.
I mean, they'll go to the open house at the beginning of the year. There will be, um, like at my school, we just had a family book fair night and a technology preview night, which is wonderful. And I love doing those things. And that really builds a sense of community, which is important for our schools. But I would like to see more opportunities for the parents just to come in and have sort of workshops or ask questions about the curriculum and, and do things like that.
Um, the, uh, the, the final, uh, point here, treating teachers as professionals.
Yes, myself included.
Yeah. That's, uh, that's been kind of a hot button issue, especially over the past few months.
It has. It has been a hot button issue. I think that we have wonderful teachers in Knox County. Over 50% of our teachers have a master's degree and we need to really listen to our teachers' concerns when they have concerns about, um, too much testing or the curriculum pace. And one thing I would like to see happen if I was on the board would be to have a non-voting teacher representative. Uh, our Knox County students have a high school student representative. So, it seems to me it would make sense to have a non-voting teacher representative.
Mm-hmm. Um, uh, we're going to get to some questions. We've got some questions on the text box. We've got a couple of callers that have some questions for it. But real quick, um, looking in light of some recent events, um, is, there's two things that come to mind and I just want to get your feel for it. And if you, if you don't want to answer, just, that's fine. Um, do you feel it's right for a board member at a quote unquote retreat to make comments about a teacher who A) is not there to talk about themselves and B) the comments being fairly negative? Um, how does that make you feel?
Yeah. I don't know the, the specific details of that situation, but I think when you're on the board, you really have to, um, you know, hold yourself to very high standards. And that sounds like to me something that would need to be discussed one-on-one with the person or, um, the person has spoken at the board. So, the board should have the opportunity to ask questions back. I mean, I think that's one, one piece that I don't really see at board meetings. I, I spoke at county commission a few weeks ago and county commission had the opportunity after we spoke to call some folks back and say, "Can I get some clarify, clarification on this or more information?" You know, I think it needs to be handled in a better way.
Sure.
Um, and, and because, you know, as teachers, you know, I've mentioned earlier, you know, our lives and our careers are basically held hostage by test results.
Yeah.
And that, that's a sickening feeling, you know, to know that you've, I mean, most, most of the people, like I said, over 50% have master's degrees. So, you've spent seven plus years in school. You love your career. You love your job. You love helping children learn. And to know that one test, your, your fate may hang in the balance your whole career.
Yeah. Are teachers being allowed to teach anymore here in Knox County or anywhere?
That's an interesting question. I think one of my concerns is, uh, we are going to a process where it seems like there's more streamlining, where, uh, maybe across the county or across the state or even across the country, we're trying to, uh, all teach very similar things at the same time. Uh, so for example, if a student moved from Knoxville to, uh, you know, Texas somewhere, for example, or, uh, another state, Georgia, for example, they would be able to pick right up. But, you know, you lose a sense of your community.
Sure.
And what, what makes your community unique. And every community's needs are different, um, even across our county, our county. I mean,
Well, you do lose that sense of identity.
Yeah. You lose that sense of identity. You're, you're losing just, I guess, that freedom to, if your kids come in after we had a snow day and they're just so excited and so pumped up about snow and weather, and that's a great teachable moment to stop and say, "Okay, I'm going to add in, you know, some weather experiments to my science, you know, to the science portion of my lessons for the next three days."
Yeah.
Well, you, you have to follow the pacing guide. And I've, I've heard it called at some of the board meetings, I think it was called the racing guide.
Wow. Wow. That, uh, that, that bothers me. Um, this bothers me as well. I, I want to get your feeling. Um, recently, uh, Commissioner Richard Briggs, uh, voting against the measure that Commissioner Broyles had put up about, um, basically protecting county employees and in, in, in particular, uh, teachers from any type of retribution. Should they speak out about a, uh, uh, anyone above them? Uh, Commissioner Briggs, voting against the measure, says he believes the bosses should be able to hire and fire employees if they talk in a quote, "repugnant" way. Uh, private enterprise can hire and fire well, according to Briggs. Uh, he says he thinks the county needs to run like a business and then followed up, uh, that by saying, uh, you know, as far as a problem with teachers, we don't seem to have a problem right now.
Well, that's, that's an interesting comment. Uh, I'm not sure if he's followed along with the same board meetings that I've, I've been to and spoken at and followed along with. I think that the measure that was put forth, I think it definitely had some teeth and is important because there has been the fear of teachers getting up there and speaking out. I mean, if you've been watching the board meetings, it is a lot of the same faces speaking out because people are afraid. And you have to understand for some people, you know, they're the, they might be a single parent. They might be the only one in their family who is carrying the health insurance. And if they lose their job, they might not have a way to provide with their, for their own children. And I think that having spoken at the board meetings, I speak for myself and my fellow colleagues, I don't believe that there was anyone that has stood up and spoken in an unprofessional manner.
Yeah.
At all. I mean, I haven't, I don't recollect anyone, you know, getting up and standing in front of the board and, you know, yelling, um, you know, calling anyone names, you know?
Nobody could be accused of slander or libel.
Yes.
You know what I mean?
Everyone's acted in a very, well, everyone that's spoken out at these meetings, from what I've seen, and I've tried to watch every one of them, is that they've all been very professional. And they, and most of it, it's just been, here's my story. Here's what's going on.
And it has been. And, and that's not to say people haven't been emotional, but that's because we're with our kids
Yeah.
all day, every day. We're the ones that see those faces.
Because you stood up and, and spoken in some of these meetings, do you fear any reprisal or retribution?
I don't fear, fear any reprisal simply because I have spoken. I've been on TV. I'm hoping that's, that's going to be my safety net.
It probably has insulated you a bit.
But, you know, you never, you never know what, what can happen. I just, I believe that even though we are educators, we should still have our First Amendment right to free speech.
Yeah, yeah. Uh, we're talking with Amber Roundtree and you can find out more about Amber at her website, votearoundtree.com. When we get back, we've got questions on the phone. We've got a couple of questions on the text box to answer. Um, and Amber's going to do that in a second. We're going to go ahead and take a quick break though. Check the traffic with Pete Michaels. Pete? What's left to go in this hour as we finish up with Amber Roundtree. votearoundtree.com. No D. R-O-U-N-T-R-E-E. Roundtree. Roundtree. votearoundtree.com or, uh, follow her on Twitter, @voteforRoundtree. That's vote, the number four, Roundtree. And, um, you got your big campaign kickoff coming up soon.
I do.
The official campaign kickoff. It's like the grand opening.
Yes. The grand opening is, uh, you know, the unveiling, that, that sort of, uh, you know, it's my society debut, I guess.
Her coming out.
My, my coming out, yes. My political coming out party. It's going to be on March 4th from 5:30 to 7:30 at the Roundup in South Knoxville. So, come on down.
Did you plan that? The Roundup for Roundtree?
Yes, I did.
Now, that's the Roundup with a D.
Roundup with a D. Don't, don't get confused.
They're drawing, "Where's the Roundup? Roundup? The Roundup."
The owner might let me put, you know, cover up the D for my kickoff. Maybe.
You can put your picture on the D. There you go.
I love it.
Because apparently your picture is very big with the texture this morning. We've got another one. Dewey says, "Woot. Amber is a hottie." Got a woot.
Woot.
Good stuff. Uh, Amber Round. Uh, Amber Roundtree, running for the District Nine seat, Knox County Board of Education. Couple of, uh, questions off the, uh, phone really quickly. Here we go. JB, good morning. You're on with Amber Roundtree.
Thank you, fellas. Ms. Roundtree, welcome.
Thank you.
Like Michael, my special teacher in elementary school was a librarian. He showed me the universe and it's a love affair. It continues to this very day. And book lovers of the world unite. Ms. Roundtree, real briefly, uh, you teach elementary school. Are kindergarteners, first and second graders being given high stakes, high energy testing put under stress? And is that mandated by the state or something we do locally so they can build data? Number two, would you briefly describe the problem with using T-Vos as a way to evaluate teachers like our friend Mark Taylor? Uh, thank you very much.
Yes. Great, great questions. Um, and I'm so happy to hear there's another book lover out there listening.
There's many of us out there.
Love it. Um, so the first question, are our kindergarten through second grade students in Knox County given high stakes testing? The answer to that is yes. Are K through two students take the SAT 10 test? And the second part of that is no, it is not state mandated. You're welcome to.
Now, hold on. They keep telling us that all the stuffs they do is because the state tells them they have to.
It is not state mandated, folks. You're welcome to, I, I can't quote the TCA code off the top of my head, but, uh, Tennessee Code Annotated mandates the TCAP test, uh, which is third through fifth. But there is no state law that states K through two students are required to take SAT 10 tests or high stakes testing.
Formative experience.
So, that's basically something that they've put in place through the county?
Yes, sir. Through the county, yes. County decision, although the state does pay for it.
Well, that's good. At least the state pays for it. I guess if we're going to blame the state, we might as well at least have the state pay for it.
That's confusing. Cause like you could make the argument that, uh, "Well, we can't not take the money. We're just being fiscally responsible."
That's right.
And it's the state. You could say that. And then, but if somebody didn't go and check and see what the code actually is.
Yes, yes.
I'm confused. They told me it was the state, Mike.
I think, and I think a lot of people are under that impression. And there are some folks, uh, last year, uh, you know, was the first year that we had done the K through two SAT 10 testing. And a lot of parents, after experiencing that, um, and their children's reactions to that, want to opt their students out of that. And there's been a lot of questions, um, from parents about can they even opt their students out?
Yeah. Well, unfortunately, most people are under the impression of that because we've actually heard quotes from people saying, "Well, it's, we're doing all the things that the state mandates." So, you know, when they tell you that it's because of the state, you just assume, "Oh, I guess it's because the state said they had to do it." Incredible. So, uh, now the other, uh, the other question we had was the T-Vos.
T-Vos, uh, I can sum up T-Vos in two words, junk science. You're welcome to, you know, look up more about that yourself. But T-Vos, uh, was never meant to be used as a tool to evaluate teachers. Um, you know, uh, TEA recently did a roadshow stop in Knoxville to talk about that. Um, we've had a teacher, Mark Taylor, speak at several board meetings about how the T-Vos data, basically he is supposed to not teach what his course is. So, he can teach to the test, so he can get a better T-Vos score, so he doesn't lose his job.
Is, is that the test that's based on how much improvement there is?
Yeah. T-Vos is growth.
So, if it's about growth and you have a, a, a whole bunch of students in your classroom that do really well and start out doing really well and continue to do really well, they make As the whole time, you would get a bad T-Vos score? you would get a bad T-VOS score?
Yeah. The, so you're not, you won't see as much growth if you have kiddos that start off.
Doing really well.
Doing really well. I mean, who doesn't want their kids to do well? So, it's, it's just, it's not a useful tool. And there's even a question about in Tennessee, uh, teachers don't even know the exact formula on which the T-VOS is calculated. And there are two different, there are two different T-VOS numbers. Um, an administrator can log in apparently and see one T-VOS predicted number, predicted for the school, but.